From St. Louis Public Radio. This is the Politically Speaking Hour on St. Louis On The Air. I'm Jason Rosenbaum. St. Louis tornado victims received some welcome news this week. President Donald Trump paved the way for federal aid to help people with housing, transportation, childcare, and medical needs. And the Missouri General Assembly approved significant tornado-related relief during its special session in Jefferson City. The special funds in particular include $100 million in direct aid to St. Louis and a tax credit that could assist people with recouping their insurance deductibles. It's much more generous than what Governor Mike Kehoe initially proposed for the special session. But in some respects, its passage may have played a significant role in making the now concluded session surprisingly successful. Joining us in studio to talk more about the state financial contribution to tornado relief is State Senator Stephen Roberts. Roberts represents Missouri's 5th Senatorial District, which takes in a portion of the city of St. Louis. Senator, welcome to the Politically Speaking Hour on St. Louis On The Air.
Glad to be back, Jason. Thank you for having me.
At the beginning of the special session, Kehoe proposed $25 million for housing-related assistance and a tax deduction to help recoup insurance premiums. What ended up passing was much more significant. How did that happen?
Yes, so we made it very clear, and I've got to give credit to the other Democrats, Senator Lincoln Huff and the governor's team as well, that for the stadium bill to move forward, we needed real relief for the city of St. Louis after the disaster of this tornado. You know, that initial $25 million would have to be shared across the entire state of Missouri, specifically limit issues with temporary housing. So, you know, we all, you know, the caucus, I'd say, was sort of split as far as their opinion towards the stadium, but we were lockstep, and this is only going to get done if St. Louis is taken care of.
And what you're referring to, and we're going to be talking about more in the show, are incentives to keep the Kansas City Chiefs and the Kansas City Royals from bolting to Kansas. But let's break down specifically what the state is going to provide to tornado victims. The $100 million specifically to the city of St. Louis, especially with the news that FEMA will be providing aid to individuals, as well as state and local governments through public assistance. How do you think the state money can help tornado victims?
Absolutely. So, when I worked with the mayor's office, and they've been phenomenal, Casey Milberg, Mayor Kara Spencer have just been extremely active, not only here in the city, but in Jefferson City as well, as we made the case for the $100 million. And what was so important with how we phrased that was it is very broadly written. So, it will be transferred to the Department of Public Safety, which Director Mark James is the director of, and he's been in weekly meetings with the city. So, he's been very involved in understanding the challenges that we face. So, you know, to the other part of your question, you know, is that enough? No, but it's what we need right now.
And do you have any idea of what the mayor may use that money for? I think she talked a little bit about that in the House Budget Committee. It could deal with like, short-term and longer-term needs.
Absolutely. You know, a big part still is folks with some of their houses that are still salvageable, you know, being able to pick up the debris that we still see all across the city. Infrastructure, you know, sidewalks, I mean, you just have to drive around North St. Louis to Central West End to see how much help that we really need.
Now, with the caveat that the city of St. Louis has by far the most damage, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that this tornado went through St. Louis County, too. Was there any effort or discussion about including St. Louis County for this money?
So, I'd say with this situation in particular, you know, and the damage to North St. Louis, most of those folks do not have insurance, and the challenges that they face, I think, are going to be much greater than some of our constituents who actually live in the county. So, a lot of the discussion, just because of the devastation faced particularly by the city of St. Louis, is what it revolved around, and there is still that $25 million that the city and the county would be able to pull from.
Can you talk a little bit about that $25 million that will go to the Missouri Housing Development Program? And you mentioned, this is not just for St. Louis and St. Louis County. It could be for other places with disasters, including southeast Missouri, which was hit really hard on May 16th as well.
Correct. So, right, that funding is used basically for the whole state of Missouri, and that's why, you know, when you look at the Joplin tornado, for example, and Governor Nixon, who issued about $50 million, I believe, for their relief efforts. I mean, they have a population that is about 20% that of the city of St. Louis. It's extremely more dense. So, a lot of folks, you know, from those rural parts of the state, and I got to give a shout out to Senator Lincoln Huff as well. He's the-
He's a Republican from Springfield, who, as you were about to say before I interrupted you, is the chairman of the Senate Appropriations Committee.
Yeah, chairman of the Senate Appropriations Committee, and he was the handler for Senate Bill 1, and he actually volunteered when the Joplin tornado happened, went down with some firefighters to help cut up trees and remove debris. So, it didn't take much convincing for him to understand the need that we had here in the city of St. Louis, and he was a staunch ally with the city, and really can't thank him enough for all of his hard work and advocacy for us.
And that MHDC program could help people find like, temporary housing, like, if they can't be in their house because it's so damaged, they could go to an apartment or somewhere else.
Right, temporary housing, exactly.
Now, one of the big challenges here is that FEMA can provide about $43,000 in housing-related help to people. But you mentioned, a lot of these folks, especially in North St. Louis, either don't have insurance, or they have insurance policies that are not going to pay for the full cost to rebuild brick homes that are maybe going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to rebuild. Is what the state and the federal government, as well as the city, because they may allocate $30 million for the Rams, is that going to be enough, given the enormity of the need?
No, we're looking at, from my conversations, well over a billion dollars' worth of damage. I mean, I don't think we have enough bricklayers in the state, or even really the nation, to kind of come in and do these types of systematic repairs that we're going to be needing all across the region. So, you know, I think we're going to have to start getting creative, working with our labor unions to find a path of rebuilding these homes in a way, so folks aren't, you know, pushed out of their neighborhood, because as you know how expensive the brick and the history of some of these houses.
I also want to discuss a tax credit, which has not gotten as much attention, but I think is actually going to be very important. One of the things I brought up with Senators Tracy McCreary and Brian Williams is that the initial proposal from Kehoe of a tax deduction to recoup insurance deductibles, like, that would have given people like, $200, because it's not a tax credit, it's a deduction. So, a tax credit up to $5,000 could be impactful, since homeowners' insurance deductibles are usually in the thousands of dollars. How did you convince Republicans to change from a deduction to a tax credit, given that it's going to be more expensive for the state?
I think a lot of folks just could kind of relate to the unique circumstance of what happened with a tornado and a disaster like this, where folks were more willing to have empathy and compassion and try to find real help. And I think that's why you saw, you know, as we were kind of talking about earlier, the way the session ended with the use of the previous question and starting debates, and really, me and my entire caucus focused on retaliation. You know, we all sort of stepped back in the situation because of this unique problem, and everyone kind of came together with the disaster relief.
And I will get to the retaliation part next, but I do want to ask, what sort of measures are going to be put in place specifically by the legislature, our oversight, to make sure this tax credit is not so needlessly complicated that people who want to recoup their deductibles just can't do it because they just don't know how? Or it just is super hard to get?
Right, and I think that's part of our role as, you know, elected leaders, to kind of outline the process, the instructions that I believe the Department of Revenue will be putting forth for folks to apply for this. And this also goes for, you know, applying for FEMA relief as well. I mean, a lot of it is going to be educating our constituency on how to get these different types of relief.
Now, let's go back to the end of the regular session. You mentioned this, but just to kind of put a little bit more description on it, Senate Democrats were really, really angry that Republicans ended filibusters aimed at protecting voter-approved initiatives on abortion rights and earned sick leave.
Right.
And there was talk about Democrats making lives miserable for Republicans, but this did not happen during the special session. Can you tell me why you kind of held off on that aforementioned retribution?
Yeah, and the reason why Democrats were so upset, and it was, the irony of it is, this is probably the most efficient, effective Senate I had seen moving until that part. I mean, we were, actually, at the beginning of session, we were moving legislation out of our chamber quicker than the House, which hardly ever happens. So, you know, a lot of the governor's main priorities, you know, state control, you know, he was able to get those done by finding compromise and working together with folks on both sides of the aisle. And with regards to the Amendment 3 and Proposition A, Democrats had offered a great deal that most of their members wanted to accept. It would have given them the Second Amendment Preservation Act for the strengthening gun rights, and a deal for the stadium as well. And in post, and in post to getting that done, they ended up using the previous question, ending all debate, and then the Senate adjourned shortly after that. So, it is vitally important that the Senate not become the House. You know, if you're a representative, you can be limited in your debate, you're not able to filibuster. It's designed to function very differently, and that's what I have loved about the institution so much, and the use of a previous question is really considered an insult to the Senate as a whole, especially if you're dealing with a minority party that's willing to find a deal.
And you may have mentioned this before, but a previous question is the name for the maneuver that forcibly ends a filibuster. So, just, we know this as Missouri political obsessives, but people that don't pay attention may not. But I want to talk about kind of the political environment in St. Louis. It has been noticeable to me that a lot of the fights and the infighting among local officials have ceased during this tornado recovery. You've seen, for example, St. Louis Board of Aldermen President Megan Green working well with Mayor Kara Spencer, given that they are not like, politically aligned. I mean, I saw you at a press conference with Governor Kehoe with State Representative Kimberly Ann Collins. You two ran against each other in 2018. But do you expect this kind of political détente to last, especially when local lawmakers have to deal with more broader tornado recovery efforts that may be more than what we've seen so far?
Right, well, I mean, I would extend that good faith beyond, you know, just our, not even our local, but state, but our federal elected officials, you know, Senator Hawley, Senator Schmidt, of course Congressman Bell have all come to St. Louis and have all worked with the governor to push the FEMA and federal aid as quickly as they can. So, you know, long-term picture, you know, I think we all kind of end up reverting back to our typical criticisms, but I do believe that on this issue, from what I have seen, everyone has been united as far as getting St. Louis and the state of Missouri the relief that we need.
In the last minute, though, I do want to point out that I have heard, and my colleagues have heard complaints specifically from North St. Louis residents about the inadequate emergency response, the sirens not going off, inability to connect with 911. Is there anything you think the state can do to provide funds or legislative guidance to make sure the emergency management system in the city is better going forward?
Right, and I think you saw a pretty swift reaction from the mayor's office as they dug deeper, removing the current disaster relief director, replacing them. So, I think that there's, you know, we've, and to the mayor's credit as well, she's only been in the office for just over 30 days when this tragedy has hit, but I've heard from local elected officials, from our aldermen, all the way up to our governor, everyone has been very impressed with Mayor Spencer's response to the tornado.
State Senator Stephen Roberts represents Missouri's 5th Senatorial District, which takes in a part of the city of St. Louis. Senator, thank you so much for joining us today.
It's my pleasure.
When we return, we'll continue our conversation about the special session of the Missouri General Assembly with Missouri House Speaker John Patterson and STLPR's Sarah Kellogg. This is the Politically Speaking Hour on St. Louis On The Air. The special session of the Missouri General Assembly's most controversial initiative by far was an effort aimed at keeping the Chiefs and the Royals from bolting to Kansas. And while that measure managed to get bipartisan support, it also faced vocal opposition, including from Republicans like Representative Bill Hardwick of Pulaski County.
And the reasons why we have these constitutional boundaries on how we make laws and what kind of laws we make is not for times when it's convenient or inconvenient, not for times when it's our favorite companies or companies that we don't like we're deciding on things, but just for situations like this, where we're about to pass a law that's patently unfair and unjust for the citizens of Missouri.
So, how did Republican leaders navigate through bipartisan opposition to pass stadium legislation? Joining us now are two people who may be able to provide the answers. House Speaker John Patterson is a Republican who represents a part of Jackson County in the Missouri House. Speaker, welcome back to the Politically Speaking Hour on St. Louis On The Air. And also joining us from beautiful and scenic mid-Missouri is Sarah Kellogg, STLPR's State House and Politics Reporter. Sarah, welcome.
Good to be here, Jason.
Speaker Patterson, why should Missourians give up potentially hundreds of millions of dollars in tax money so that Chiefs and the Royals don't move a few miles over the border into Kansas?
Well, I think the simple answer is that we'd probably give it up anyway if they left. But let me start by saying, thanks for having me on, Jason. I think I was muted earlier. But let me start by saying-
You're forgiven, Mr. Speaker, but continue.
Glad to be with you. It's, there are people out there who would say that this is a giveaway, that if you look at studies, public financing partly of stadiums isn't an economic winner, that we shouldn't be doing this. And I don't, I can't argue with any of those arguments. I think, you know, there's a lot of validity to that. But I think the reason that ultimately I was able to support this legislation is that if you look at the deal that we have, if you look at the value of NFL and Major League franchises, I think even though we're going to take this revenue and divert it to building new facilities, I think overall, it's a winner for the people of Missouri, and I think it's actually a big winner for the people of Missouri. And I don't begrudge anyone who voted one way or the other. I think people have to do what they think is best for their constituents in their state. But on balance, when you look at it, I think Missouri wins with this deal.
Why can't the owners of the Chiefs and the Royals, who I presume are very wealthy, just pay for the stadium themselves?
Well, they are going to make a significant investment in both, and that's part of the deal that we have. This is a public and private partnership, so they will have to put up money themselves, and they're going to make significant investments in both of these facilities. Also, these are not going to be their stadiums. When they're built, they're going to be owned by the taxpayers, and it's not just the Kansas City Chiefs that are going to be playing in this facility. It's going to be Taylor Swift concerts, it's going to be Monster Truck. All of that benefits the taxpayers and the state with the tax revenue. So, it's not just for the Chiefs and Royals, but they're public entities, and the public will benefit from them.
Some of your colleagues contended that the stadium bill is unconstitutional, partly because it provides public funds to private businesses, and also because it just has too many subjects within the bill. What would you say to that?
I would say that, again, these are going to publicly own facilities, so I don't have any heartburn that it's going to any private individuals. Again, they'll be owned by the public and leased to the teams. And then in terms of the things that were put on there, you know, we make a lot of laws during session, a lot of bills get put into place that are combined with other bills. I'm comfortable with what we did. I think you'll see it maybe challenged in the courts, but I do believe that we were able to put this package together, and I'm comfortable passing it, even with the different provisions. It all had to do with taxation.
Yeah, one part that might be challenged in the courts, Representative Darren Chapel, a Republican of Rogersville, said another aspect of the bill, which seeks to lower property taxes in select counties, is unconstitutional because it's not uniform across the state. Here's what he had to say about that.
I think many of the individuals here in this room are concerned about the idea of being able to bring tax relief to their citizens back home. I believe that portion of this bill will be struck down by the Missouri State Supreme Court because it does not pass the sniff test, even at the outset.
That was Representative Darren Chapel of Rogersville explaining his opposition to legislation that included property tax relief and incentives for Kansas City stadiums. What is your reaction to Representative's comments?
Well, that representative has voted on two laws that have been struck down by the courts, as have I. I'm comfortable with what we were able to pass, and if the courts take a look at it, we'll just see what they have to say and respect their decision.
Do you think that the legislature may have to come back in a special session to retool the property tax part of the bill? And if they do have to do that, doesn't that showcase a failure in the legislative process if they have to like, redo one of the marquee things they passed in special session?
Well, I would like to, and I've actually urged the governor to do this, I'd like to see us do something in September, when we're there anyway, for our annual veto session to address property taxes. I'm not sure that we'll have to retool any of the things in this bill, but what I would like to see are places like Jackson County and St. Louis County included in some sort of property tax relief that many of the counties in the state got within this bill. I'd like to see us added to that, but I'm not sure this has to be retooled.
Are you concerned that the legislature spent so much money in the special session and in the regular session that lawmakers may have to produce, you know, a leaner budget next year? Or could this even result in Governor Kehoe issuing more line item vetoes in this year's budget?
Well, I think fiscal responsibility has been one of the hallmarks of House Republicans, our philosophy toward governing, and, you know, our budget that we put forward, and I know people were very disappointed about some of the things that didn't get passed in the budget, but we've been very mindful of that, and we've known for quite some time that the federal money that we've had, the luxury of the past four or five years, that is all disappearing, and that budgets will be tighter. So, you're absolutely right, we are going to have to watch our spending, and, but that was something we knew before this. If ever there was a reason to use the surplus funds that we have, I think it would be for disaster relief for our citizens, and that's why we want to keep money on the bottom line if we can, and which I think the House did. And I think it's an appropriate use of dollars that we did in this special session. But again, that's why we try to keep our budgets as lean as possible, to have money for contingencies like this.
I would be remiss if I didn't talk about how some of your GOP colleagues signed a letter calling for the US Senate to pass the so-called Big Beautiful Bill. And when I say the Senate, I mean the US Senate, and that includes tax cuts, immigration restrictions, and perhaps, most controversially, potentially, major changes to Medicaid. I didn't see your name on this letter. Is your omission kind of expressing some concern about how this bill could ultimately affect Missouri's budget going forward, especially if the state has to pay more money to, for the Medicaid program?
Well, unfortunately, if I signed every letter that I had the opportunity to sign, all I would do is sign letters. I don't think a mission is a message for anything. I think I'm very focused on what we're doing here in Missouri, and really focused on our legislation and our budgets. One of the things that you did mention was cuts to Medicaid, whether it's altering the FRA program that we have or making cuts to Medicaid. That would be devastating to our budgets, and I'm not sure how we would even deal with that, because the cuts would be so severe. So, I agree with Senator Josh Hawley, who said that he does not favor cuts to the Medicaid program. We'll just have to see what happens with the federal government.
Tensions between Republicans and Democrats are very high at the end of session, primarily because of how the Senate passed measures taking aim at voter-approved abortion and paid-sick-leave initiatives. Do you think the special session alleviated those tensions at all, or do you think we're going to see more rancor next year?
I do. I think most of the kind of tension was in the Senate, and they have their traditions, and I totally respect that, and I think there were some bad feelings after the way it ended. I think in the House, generally, we're very collegial. I thought things went very well this session in terms of working with Democrats and Republicans. And then I think the session did help some of those relationships, given that we were all there in solidarity with our colleagues in St. Louis. And I think one of the best things that you saw in our session in the House was that Democrats really acknowledged and highlighted some of the efforts of their Republican colleagues to help during this, the tornado, and that was probably the best thing that I saw. And that always helps things when you're able to recognize each other for efforts that we produce across the aisle, and recognize each other's humanity. And so, yeah, in the House, I think it helped, in the Senate, it helped a little bit, but I think the divisions are a little bit deeper there.
House Speaker John Patterson represents a portion of Jackson County in the Missouri House, and will continue in that leadership role through the 2026 session. Mr. Speaker, thank you so much for joining us again.
Thanks for having me.
So, let's go to a couple of lightning roundish questions with Sarah. Were you surprised the special session wasn't a complete train wreck?
Honestly, yes, I was. I think that if this session had been just focused on the stadium bill, I think that would have had a lot harder time of maybe getting through the chambers, but I think pairing that with the disaster relief, I think that caused a lot of lawmakers to kind of look at the bigger picture and saying, well, if we can get this disaster relief through, then like, a vote for the stadium bill wouldn't be unheard of. There are lots of Democrats that voted for that bill. I would not be surprised if that was related to the $100 million that eventually, you know, became, you know, got out the door. So, I am surprised it wasn't a train wreck. I think combining those issues, I think, really helped get all of those bills across.
What do you think the success of the special session says about Governor Kehoe's ability to work with the legislature?
I think it says a lot. I know last Wednesday, when the House, or when the Senate was kind of going to debate the bills on the floor, they were supposed to go in at 10:00. They did not go in until 5:00, with pretty much the entire, you know, the story being that Kehoe was visiting lawmakers to try to get a deal, to try to figure out how people could hit yes on that, you know, button and say, vote yes on the stadium bill. And so, I think that shows that he's willing to do the work to get these priorities done. It's negotiating with people that he knows might be a no initially. It involves negotiating with Democrats. I think it showed a lot of the work he's willing to do to get something that he wants.
Now, we all know that these political lovefests don't last. In fact, I've seen a lot of Democrats very critical of Kehoe for preemptively calling out the National Guard for this weekend's protests over immigration enforcement, which we're going to talk about in the next segment. And we also heard from Senator Roberts about how Democrats are still upset about what happened at the end of the regular session, and they still may follow through on their promises to make like, difficult for their GOP counterparts next year. We can't predict the future, but do you think next year will be rougher?
Yes, absolutely. I think, again, the subject of this special session being a part on storm relief, I think, again, there was a bigger picture involved for Democrats, and they knew that they couldn't really be maybe as petty as they want or show their opinions on how session ended. But next year, there's a lot of time that can be used. We saw a little bit of that, actually, a couple, you know, a week or so prior to the special session starting, where Democrats, it was a session where they had to sign the bills, and there wasn't a quorum, and Democrats called for a quorum, and they had to adjourn and go the next day, where all these Republicans had to drive to Jefferson City. You know, I think we're going to see things like that. I think it's definitely going to be, there's going to be a lot of tension next year.
My last question for you, so much got done during this session that I'm struggling to figure out what are going to be the major issues in 2026. Again, we can't predict the future, but has like, were the Republicans too successful, and they may just have nothing to do next year, except maybe like, create official state birds or official state dinosaurs or whatever?
I think there's always going to be legislation to pass. One that I know Senator Roberts mentioned was maybe re-passing the Second Amendment Preservation Act, SAPA, that didn't get through both chambers. It only got through the House, but I think we're going to still expect to see a debate on video lottery terminals, so gambling, the machines that you see, the gaming machines in like, gas stations. So, I think we're going to see legislation on that. There's always going to be issues that pop up. Those are maybe two at the top of my mind, but I think they'll be plenty busy.
And I also think that, as I mentioned to the speaker, whatever passes out of that Big Beautiful Bill, which is still really in flux right now, it could have a huge impact on the Medicaid program and on the budget. So, that's something that we're all going to have to be looking at very carefully going forward. But you know, Sarah, I think it's time for a little bit of a break from the legislature, and we appreciate how much you keep out a lookout for the state as our State House and politics reporter. Sarah, thank you for joining us again.
Thanks so much, Jason.
The Politically Speaking Hour on St. Louis On The Air is produced by Jason Rosenbaum, Alex Hoyer, Emily Woodbury, Danny Wissentowski, Maya Norfleet, and Elaine Chah.
St. Louis On The Air is a production of St. Louis Public Radio. Understanding starts here.
Do you find yourself regularly listening to episodes of St. Louis On The Air? Suggest us to a friend you think might enjoy our conversations. And leave us a review and rating on Apple Podcasts on the App Store. and rating on Apple Podcasts on the App Store. It's the simplest way to help people discover our show. Thanks.
St. Louis Public Radio is a member-supported service of the University of Missouri, St. Louis.